Good evening, welcome to the December 2nd, 2021 regular meeting of the Planning Commission in the city of Calabasas. We have all commissioners present except for Commissioner Washburn, who has an excused absence. Commissioner Harrison.
Yes.
Would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, sure. Please place your hand, your right hand over your heart and ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some vote?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none opposed, the agenda is approved. Commissioners, do we have any announcements or introductions?
I'm here.
Alright. Then let's move on to oral communications, public comment. This is the portion of the meeting for citizens wishing to address the commission on any matters not on the agenda. Who's monitoring tonight?
Sorry. Good evening, Chair, I'll monitor tonight. So let me open up the attendees. No one has their hand raised, so.
Okay, give it a couple seconds. Anybody who wants to be heard on matters not on the agenda, hit, raise your hand.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to public hearing. Item number one, file number CUP 2021-001ZCL-2021-138. This is a request for a conditional use permit and zoning clearance permit to allow for the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption via a type 41 liquor license from the State Department of Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverage Control. The installation of a new railing around the existing outdoor seating area and operation of a new indoor restaurant within the existing Gelson's Market located at 22277 Mulholland Highway within the commercial retail zoning district and scenic corridor overlay zone. Who is going to be presenting on this? Jaclyn?
Yes, I will, Madam Chair. If you're ready, I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Get away.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit and a zoning clearance permit to allow for the sale of beer and wine and for onsite consumption of beer and wine in conjunction with the operation of a new indoor restaurant within the existing Gelson's Market located at 22277 Mulholland Highway within the commercial retail zoning district and scenic corridor overlay zone. I also want to mention that this project was noticed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. And the notice was also posted on the city's website and throughout the city at all required locations. Staff did receive one item of public correspondence from a neighbor who is in support of the project. And that email should have been forwarded to the Commissioners earlier today. Here's an aerial map of the subject site. It's outlined in green here. It's just south of the intersection of Mulholland Highway and Mulholland Drive. Property is located within the commercial retail zoning district and is also within the scenic corridor overlay zone due to the proximity of the site to Mulholland Highway. I want to mention that no scenic corridor permit was required for their scope of work because no new exterior structures or features were proposed. So the property is 6.16 acres in total. And it's improved with an existing shopping center, which includes the anchor tenant of Gelson's. The surrounding land uses in the vicinity include residential uses, both single-family and multifamily, as well as a gas station at the corner here on Mulholland Highway. And then an existing office building to the north right here. And no other liquor licenses are issued for tenants in the general vicinity. Aside from the liquor license that Gelson's itself already has, which is for sale and offsite consumption and then for instructional tastings. But there are no other tenants in the center that operate with a liquor license. Project before you tonight is again a request for a CUP, a conditional use permit, to allow for the sale and onsite consumption of beer and wine via a type 41 license from the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control in conjunction with the operation of a new restaurant within Gelson's Market. Calabasas Municipal Code Section 17.62.060 requires conditional use permit requests to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Here's a photograph of the subject site. This is Gelson's as viewed from the parking lot. The restaurant will be located within the existing Gelson's Market in this area to the left of Gelson's right here. And restaurant patrons will be able to utilize the existing outdoor seating area in the area in front of the restaurant as well. So the tables and chairs kind of blend into the background of Gelson's a little bit, but if you can see in the photo, there are tables and chairs, a seating area that extends throughout the length of Gelson's. So the area that will be utilized for alcoholic beverage consumption is just the area right here to the left in the photo, which is on the exterior of the building where the restaurant is being proposed. The remainder of Gelson's outdoor seating throughout the rest of the building will remain as is currently. Here we have a site plan. Mulholland Highway is shown right here on their site plan. And then we have the shopping center, which includes shops on either side of the main anchor tenant, which is Gelson's Market. And here we have the area of work, which is the bottom left-hand corner of Gelson's. The restaurant area will be going on the inside right here, and then they'll be occupying the outdoor seating area that's existing. And I do want to mention on the site plan slide here that Gelson's has four entrances currently. You have a main entrance in the center here, and an entrance on the left and the right-hand side. And the entrance off to the far left right here, which is primarily used for the food court area currently, is the entrance that will be fenced in with this railing area that's being installed in compliance with the state ABC's requirements. We have their existing floor plan. So as you can see in the interior area of Gelson's right here, in the bottom left-hand corner of the building, there's a seating area currently used primarily for their food court area. There's a fireplace, a TV counter seating and a few tables. And then we have the outdoor seating area that runs the length of the front of Gelson's. There's also a few planter areas right here as well. Moving to their proposed floor plan, so on the interior area that was previously seating, they knew how, they now have a new wine slash tapas bar. So this will be a restaurant and bar that serves beer, wine, appetizers and tapas, primarily small plates. And they'll have a counter seating around the bar area as well, and a railing that kind of blocks this area off from the rest of the Gelson's Market. And then this outdoor seating area that's existing, a railing is being installed around that area so that patrons of the restaurant can bring their beverages outside and sit in this outdoor seating area. And the State Department of ABC requires a railing around any outdoor areas where alcoholic beverages will be sold. And then they are still remaining compliant with ADA regulations. So there is a ADA accessible pathway right here. They're leaving five feet of space between that railing and the existing pillars. No other changes to the site layout are being made other than the installation of that low railing. So the existing planter is to remain in this area right here and the curb area as well that is existing to remain. And we have the elevations. Again, the only change to the exterior of the building is this low railing. And then we see the elevation beyond that railing, so it's just a reconfiguration of the outdoor tables that they currently have and new counter seating for those patrons that will be dining in the outdoor seating area. Gelson's currently already maintains a type 21 liquor license from the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for the sale of alcoholic beverages within the market and a type 86 license for onsite instructional tastings. The type 21 liquor license was approved under Planning Commission Resolution Number 95-08. And the type 86 liquor license was approved under Planning Commission Resolution 11-515. The existing store is in operation from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. And the new restaurant will be limited to those same operating hours, which is in compliance with the allowable hours for alcoholic beverages prohibited under state law, which is prohibited between the hours of 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. The onsite consumption of alcohol will be limited to the interior restaurant area, which was shown in the proposed floor plan railed in, and the existing outdoor patio, which is being enclosed with railing in compliance with ABC's requirements. That, I'll move on to the findings for a conditional use permit. The proposed use is conditionally permitted within the subject zoning district, and it does comply with all of the applicable provisions of the Development Code. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific or master plan. The approval of the conditional use permit for the proposed use is in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And the location and operating characteristics of the proposed use are compatible with the existing and anticipated future land uses in the vicinity. With that, staff concludes that the proposed project will not alter the existing grocery store slash shopping center use of the subject site, which is an allowed use in the CR zoning district. The project is exempt from sequel review, and that the proposed project meets all required findings for a conditional use permit. So with that, staff recommends that the commission adopt Resolution Number 2021-735, approving file number CUP-2021-001 and ZCL-2021-138. Thank you, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. Very good presentation, concise, direct.
Thank you.
Do we have, before I open the public hearing, do we have any questions from any of the Commissioners? Commissioner Mueller.
Yes, thank you. I just was a little confused in terms of the total indoor and outdoor seating. Jaclyn, if I understood correctly, the current indoor is 22 and the proposed is 16, is that correct?
Yes, let me pull up the.
Sure.
Really quick, so I can get the exact number to you. You said the number of seats or the square footage?
Seating.
Yes, so the interior has 22 seats currently, and it loses a few net seats, so it will have 16 seats in total. The patio will gain a few seats, so it has 16 seats currently, and it will have 20 seats in total.
Right, so that's, okay, great. That's, that's what I thought. And just one other quick question, does this glorious restaurant have a name?
I'm not sure what the name will be yet, but the applicant is here to answer any questions specific to the restaurant.
I would recommend free wine. But that's just an idea.
In name and practice?
Oh, I don't let them do that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Oh, hi, Robert. We can see you. Commissioner Leah.
Yes, I have a couple of quick questions, which may lead to others based on the answers. Is this an existing restaurant?
So the restaurant itself is not existing, but it will be occupying an area within Gelson's that is a food court area. Did you have another question?
Not existing.
Correct.
I wasn't sure, because we constantly refer to what is proposed.
Yes.
Second question is, who is the owner and operator of the restaurant?
I don't believe we know who the operator of the restaurant will be. Gelson's does own the, Gelson's leases the building, so there are a few different kind of food counters within Gelson's currently. So my assumption is that it will be another one of those same food counters that will just be serving alcohol, but I don't believe we have a name for the operator yet.
Who will the license be issued to then?
To Gelson's.
To Gelson's? Even though they may not be operating the, I'm just trying to clear up the confusions.
Well, this might be a, this might, these might be questions well directed to the, to the applicant. But who might, might have the answers.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. And Michael, you'll let us know. Let's start with the applicant, if we, if we have the representative from the applicant.
Jaclyn, just to confirm, is the applicant Brett Engstrom?
Yes.
Okay, so that is the only person in the audience right now, and his hand is up. So if you would like, I can allow him to talk.
Please. Please admit him. And can we have clarification on that last name, please?
Yes, so Mr. Engstrom, you are Engstrom. I've enabled your ability to talk, so you can go ahead and unmute yourself and, and address the commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me this evening. I'd like to start off by thanking planning staff. She really went above and beyond and put a lot of extra effort in getting this through. So I wanted to reach out and say thank you to your planning staff. She's an asset to the city. With that being said, I'm here on behalf of Gelson's Market, 22277 Mulholland Drive or Mulholland Highway. You folks know it as well as I do. Gelson's is a Southern California company. Been around since 1951, first store in Burbank. And now they operate 25 stores throughout all the Southern California counties. But really a, a Southern California company. Let me answer a question that was raised by Commissioner Leah. Gelson's actually will operate this restaurant. The license is attached to Gelson's. They are in full control of the tapas bar operation, and that is a piece of the store operation. So it will be staffed by a specific Gelson employees. That sounded like a great vehicle.
Yeah, sorry. I turned off the sound in it. Sorry.
The operation will be handled by Gelson's. So the same attention they give to the rest of the store will be observed in the restaurant area as well. We don't have a particular different name. It, it's, it's the tapas bar. Is what they call it in each of their locations. We've done probably seven or eight of these already. We have another four that are being worked on at the moment. So this is a chain-wide addition to their stores. I'll suggest the free wine caption. I'm not sure how that flies, but I will bring it up with corporate and see what they have to say. That being said, it is a type 41 license, which is beer and wine at a bona fide eating establishment. There will be a menu of freshly prepared items available. As well as if there's something else at one of the existing food operations within the store, you can grab that food and bring it over and consume it in our area as well. If you choose to. No alcohol, no beer and wine will be allowed to leave the area. There is railing around the interior and the exterior, so it is a strictly enforced area of consumption. Cafes operating hours would be the same as a store, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That helps with compliance. It's a lot easier for people to remember just the general operating store hours. With that being said, I'd like to open it up to you guys if you have any questions or concerns about the operation.
I, I have, this is more, this is just a curiosity question, I guess. How will this impact? The area that this is in is very close to the prepared food section in the Wolfgang Puck section. Will this impact those areas at all? Will it replace those areas at all?
So a, a portion, the interior portion is currently used as a seating area, just a general seating area for the store, which is the Wolfgang Puck, or the bakery can come over and sit there, or you can sit and wait for your, your significant other to finish her shopping needs. We will be taking a portion of that general seating area and apply it to the tapas bar. But there will be other seats included outside the railing for those other services that were, that are available now.
Okay, I, and I'm not speaking specifically about seating. So what I'm hearing and looking at the plan, it appears that the, that the, other than the seating, the existing seating area, the closest other area in the store right now is the prepared food section. I'm not hearing that that will be impacted, and it doesn't appear from the plan that that will be impacted. Is, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay. Okay.
Those, those are popular items in each of the stores, and they, they want to add to the services and not really take away from what's there right now.
Are there questions from any, Commissioner Leah, your hand is still, your hand still appears to be up. Was that from before?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Are there any other, any other questions? And if not, do I have a, we have a motion?
Just one, one quick question.
Yes.
Mr. Engstrom, and I was offline for 30 seconds with a computer problem, so if this was covered, let me know. But I'm sure you're aware that there are many students who hang out in front of Gelson's, buy, buy food and sodas and stuff. Are you, have you thought about any, I don't know, security or protection to make sure that those kids who are under 21 don't have access to, I mean, I guess they can go in there and eat. But just in terms of the alcohol consumption issue, is there any way to kind of watch that to make sure there isn't a problem there?
Yes, so thank you for asking that question. In, in part, with the railing, it helps to clearly lineate where the alcohol consumption area is. So anyone stepping within that area is automatically recognized by whoever's working the counter. And there'll be one person opening up in the morning, but at least two people throughout the day, and even more when it's busy. So number one, they identify who's in the area. They have a railing controlling the area. They're also trained. Gelson spends a lot of time training their employees on responsible sales of alcohol. So IDs where we will be requested and required for anybody of reasonable drinking age, I should say. I'm still commented or complimented when people ask me for my ID. But they will be recognizing people as they come in. A number of our stores are located in busy urban areas near high schools. And Gelson's has an excellent record with the Department of ABC as far as responsible retailing for alcoholic beverages. So they will, and as you know, Gelson's is not the cheapest store around. So they spend extra time training their employees to keep a certain level of service. And that includes safety. So I think we'll be able to do this in a responsible manner and keep an eye out for any underage, what's the word I'm looking for, creative high school students? I know we all were in high school at one time, but Gelson does a good job of handling their stores.
Just to follow up, Madam Chair, Mr. Engstrom, maybe evidence of what you're saying is, have you had any problems at all with respect to underagers going into the area where you've had wine tasting events, the other end of the store?
No, so wine tasting events are operated in, in partnership with a vintner or distiller. Someone comes in and presents their product. And it really is setting up almost a, a temporary bar situation within the store where they have to identify everybody coming in. They're supposed to collect IDs or jot down and check IDs for people that are taking samples. So we have had no real issues, fingers crossed, with anybody coming in during the instructional tastings.
Thank you. Commissioner Mueller, I was gonna add that this, the conditional use permit request was also forwarded to our Development Review Committee, which includes the Sheriff's Department. And so that would have given them an opportunity to weigh in if they've had any issues or known of any issues at this location. And they had no, no issues with, with this alcohol request.
And I, you know, I was going to ask whether any of this beer and wine will be like in a self-service kind of setup versus being served. But quite frankly, this is in a market where there's lots of alcohol out on the shelves. So I, I don't, thinking about it a little, little bit further, I, I don't think it really makes a difference. I, Commissioner Leah.
Yes, just two points of clarification from Mr. Engstrom. One, the, the restaurant is not existing right now, correct?
This particular operation is not existing. The floor area is there, will be taking some existing floor area, but this new, this restaurant will be new. Yes, sir.
And therefore the license has not been issued yet.
Correct.
Okay, just one of those points of clarification. Thank you.
Of course.
Alright, are there any other questions? Okay, Mr. Engstrom, before I let you go, as the applicant, have you read through the conditions attached to the resolution?
We have read through and reviewed them, and we find them suitable, both suitable and acceptable.
So you are prepared to comply with those conditions, should this be passed? Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I would move to approve PC Resolution 2021-735.
Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you. Any further?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just want to make a comment. I think, Mr. Engstrom, thank you for your presentation and thank, and thank Gelson's for doing this. I think this is, is going to improve. It doesn't need improvement, but it's going to improve it even more, and, and I'm, you know, delighted that they are adding this restaurant space.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I agree with Commissioner Harrison. I think this is going to be a very popular spot. I, okay, any for Commissioner Leah?
Yes, should this resolution be made subject to, since the license does not, is not in existence yet? I, I can look for the legal.
It, it should not, a conditional use permit will run with the land, and so it doesn't, it's, it doesn't matter who the actual license is. But whoever is operating or utilizing initially use permit is required to obtain a license in compliance with ABC requirements.
Okay.
And I would add that condition number 13 in the existing resolution on page six bakes that requirement in that this is the city's approval if approved tonight, but they can't start serving until they also have the state license in hand.
And I think the state typically doesn't issue their license until they have the city approval. So in a few weeks, typically, we would get a letter from ABC asking for the city sign off and proof that it's been approved by the city.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I think that's completed the circle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving PC Resolution 2021-735, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Thank you. This is approved, and Jaclyn, thank you for the presentation. You know, excellent. Alright, that is the only item for public hearing on our agenda tonight, so we are on to the Director's Report. Who's going to be providing that tonight?
I can provide just a, a quick update of what's, what's in the pipeline. Looking at our, looking at our future agenda list for the Planning Commission on our, on the next meeting in December. I don't have the actual date in front of me. December 15th or 16th?
16th.
Is.
The 16th.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we have a sign program for Creekside, so Creekside is basically where the Albertson Shopping Center is located. They want to update or add some new signage to that shopping center. So in order to add additional signage, they have to go through and get approved, basically a update to their existing sign program. So that's been in the works now for a while. It's been reviewed by the ARP, and now it's ready for Planning Commission review. And then it looks like the Ridgeline Discussion is back on the agenda for December 16th as well. Again, that should just be a discussion item. And looking into January, it looks like we have a variance for, in addition to a home on Parks Vienna or Serena. And it's not necessarily a zero lot line issue. There's, it's a weird lot configuration that's necessitating that variance. Otherwise, the actual addition would have been permitted or could have been permitted administratively. And then just from a general sort of updates standpoint, just wanted to let the commission know that I've been tracking the permit history for the city since about 2016, number of planning permits that are submitted. And I just wanted to report that last month, November, was our highest volume of permits that had been submitted to the city since 2016 in any given month. And this year, it looked And this year, it looks like we're, we've already exceeded the number of permits that have been submitted in the past, like three or four years, you know, for each one of those years individually. So we, we are definitely busy in the planning department. So despite the pandemic and, and the slowdown that occurred last year, it seems like everything has come back full circle. And of course, the planning departments also take, is taking permits online, so that's helped facilitate additional permit volume. And then just wanted to point out, the commission is probably aware that the Volvo dealership is now vacant. And there was an article, I believe last month, that mentioned that Cadillac is intending on moving in. That's our understanding as well. They may, they may likely move in with some minimal improvements on the inside just to get it up to compliance. And then we do expect that after they move in, they'll come forward with a application to do some exterior modifications to bring it into more of the Cadillac corporate compliance standard, including signage. So if and when that all moves forward, the planning commission will see that, of course. And then finally, the Rondell Hotel, which is now the Camrya Hotel, is getting close to completion. So just wanted to keep the commission aware of that project, which the commission saw quite a while ago. And that's all I have for director's report.
Right, thank you very much. Do we have any reports from any of the commissioners? All right, hearing none. Have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I have a, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I saw in the paper, in the Acorn, that Gora Hills is having objective design standards, virtual public workshops, because some builders may be able to build by right. And I'm concerned about our objective design standards because, for example, you were just referring to Albertsons. That's, we built, when I was on the planning commission in the 90s, that was built according to the Los Angeles Gateway Standards Monterey, you know, Spanish style. And the staff has not enforced that style since then. I mean, that, so, and has recommended approval of projects that don't comply with that at all. So I'm concerned how we can, how can we tighten that up so that there is compliance with our objective standards, just like Gora Hills is doing? Because some builders may be able to build by right. So can we, is there time to address this? Because I'm, again, you're, you're coming up with new signs for Albertsons, and, and they're, you know, I, I just hope that they'll be in compliance with the design standards and not something, you know, Spanish colonial or whatever else you want to do, as opposed to the design standards that the city's adopted.
Matt, am I able to address that, or is that just a comment to be...
Not on the agenda. So the, the correct answer, Commissioner Harrison, if the city wanted to take a look at adjusting our existing and or strengthening our existing objective design standards, that's certainly something that's doable. That would need to be put on the planning commission and the staff's to-do list. As you know, the, the staff only can do what the city manager and the council direct. I will take that to the city manager as a work item request, and then from there, it will, it will, he'll assess it, and it will go through the process from there.
I appreciate it, because I am concerned there's been just no following of, I mean, like that hotel, there's just no, no, nobody's following the design standard. So if there is a way to tighten it up so that there's no leeway, or less leeway for somebody who has a right to build, that would be helpful, I think.
I understood, of course. I'm not commenting on any past project, none of which are on the agenda.
But yeah, we'll take it. That's okay, but the concern is, it's the same with the Gora. I don't think they have a, I think they're concerned about being forced to build something or to allow something to be built. And we want to make sure it meets certain design criteria that are objective.
And so that's why we'll, we'll move that forward. But as noted, I make no promises. The work plan is set by the council in the current budget.
Okay, I understand.
The request will be passed on.
Thanks so much, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, we have anything, anything else? All right, a motion to adjourn?
Move. Second.
All right. We stand adjourned until the regular meeting of December 16th. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Jaclyn.